Aye.
Yeah.
Okay, got a call of meaning to order. An item two. That we're gonna address the emergency ordinance. Chris, you want to read that?
Well, yes, sir. I can tell you a little bit about what the ordinance entails, and Bob is prepared to answer any questions along those lines as well. What we are trying to do with this action is make clear to the public what the expectations are and what our team, including our public safety team, will be working to achieve in regard to coronavirus response. It recognizes the authority of the governor and the state relating to definitions of what is an essential business and what is not, but makes crystal clear the expectation that folks are to stay at home. They are to leave their homes only for essential activities, those relating to basic needs, medical care, and work related to businesses defined as essential in the governor's order. It authorizes the resources of the city to bring that about, and that's been consistent with what we've been doing in recent days in regard to visiting local businesses, educating on appropriate social distancing techniques and activities that are necessary to preserve safety. So we believe we've attempted here to strike the right balance based on what we heard the other day from you all in our conversations. Bob, do you want to round out any additional information in regard to that?
Just briefly, Chris, if I could. So I will tell all council members first, and any of your constituents, please ask them to refer to the governor's executive order, which is 2020-17. That was issued Tuesday, and that sets forth the businesses that can remain open or actually sets forth the businesses that must close. So folks that have questions about what is essential or not essential, refer to the governor's executive order. And Chris, if you don't mind, I'll flesh out a little bit of what this ordinance is and intends to do briefly. So from the beginning of this epidemic, each one of you council members has approached us wanting to know what you can do within your legal authority to help stem the spread of the disease and help provide relief to our citizens, residents, and visitors. I felt like y'all were saying we don't want to be on the sidelines. We talked about the legal authority of the city to do what it could do. We have closely monitored the Center for Disease Control, the federal government, South Carolina DHEC, and the governor's office for all that they have done and the guidance and the law that they have issued. In light of that, this proposed ordinance before you is an effort to stop the spread of the coronavirus that causes COVID-19. It recognizes, it encapsulates, it restates that all of the expert advice out there says we've got to stop crowds and we've got to promote social distancing. So it further commits the city to carrying out those measures that the governor has enacted, taking into account all the advice from the CDC, the federal government, and South Carolina DHEC, especially as it relates to social distancing and gathering of folks. This ordinance encourages everybody to stay home. It encourages everybody to be socially distant. But if they choose to go out, if they decide they have to go out for an essential need or they go to one of the businesses and locations that have not been closed by the governor, they've got to limit themselves to no more than three people in a crowd. And that includes, by our reading of the law and our authority, retail establishments, restaurants, a street, a sidewalk, a parking lot, a parking garage, or any public space. And if folks individually and providers who operate those buildings aren't doing everything they can to promote social distancing, to discourage crowds, it does give us the authority, our law enforcement who's on the front line, to step in and make appropriate corrections to disperse or limit crowding. That's what it does. It requires only one reading today. It will be in effect for 15 days, and the staff request is that you consider it and approve it upon, it will be a motion, a second, and a vote after you all discuss it, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank Rob.
Yes, sir. Bob, just a couple of questions. And I know we've gone through the wording here. In your opinion, does this in any way go beyond the governor's executive orders or the federal guidelines? And then question number two, is this in accordance with the Attorney General's legal opinion about the statutory authority of the municipal governments?
The answer to your first question is no, it does not go beyond the governor's executive orders. What it primarily does is it restates our commitment to the information and knowledge in those orders, and it does use a measure that is given local authorities, if we deem necessary, to limit crowds and promote social distancing. And yes, I believe it complies with the South Carolina Attorney General's opinion about our authority as the Home Rule Act where our powers drive versus state law where the governor's powers drive. I think the answer to the first question is no, it does not exceed governor's orders. And two, it does comply with the South Carolina Attorney General's latest opinion regarding.
That's all. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Mayor.
So Bob, so what you're saying is, is that we are essentially, this order is really just sort of promoting what the governor's executive orders are? Is that what you're saying? And also, again, just to reiterate, the Attorney General's opinion is just that it's not legally binding, correct?
Yes, the answer to your second question is yes, it is only an opinion. I've studied it. I think it's a pretty solid analysis of the law. But yeah, and your first question, yes, this ordinance is intended to restate our commitment to what we think are the two most important things in this pandemic is social distancing and crowds. So it is, but it is now codifying, it is placing into our law for the next 15 days, a reminder to everybody that our law enforcement does have the authority, if they deem it necessary, to begin separating crowds and thereby promoting social distance. And again, as I read the governor's order, that's everywhere in the state except for in someone's home. And that would include a retail establishment, that would include a restaurant, that would include an office building. If people aren't going to socially distance and stop crowding themselves, this codifies our freedom that if we need.
Okay. And my follow-up question is to Chris. You had mentioned teams in the city that were going out to our big box retailers and interacting with their management about, you know, how to, you know, best social distance practicing and whatnot. To what extent? So for example, you know, when I think about our big box stores, you know, giving the example that I gave from our last meeting about, you know, Home Depot and many folks gathering out there, you know, what are we doing with, because I'm not really sure what all stores are still open? So when we talk about, you know, retail stores like Ross and Marshalls and things like that, are those stores still open? And if they are, what is it exactly that we're doing? Because how are those stores deemed essential? I mean, your Easter dress can wait, your, you know, bathing suit, you know, all of those kind of things can wait. So are all those stores still open as well? And if they are, I know that in some other states, what they're doing with some of their retail box stores is they are coordinating off areas of those stores which are not deemed essential. So for example, if you're, you know, need a new grill, well, that's not really essential. So they're coordinating off areas in those stores and really just leaving open the parts that are necessary for folks to have access to.
Our understanding is that the governor's delineation of non-essential businesses and the governor's order to close non-essential businesses is very specific, and we don't, we are not proposing in this action a recategorization of businesses that is distinct from what the governor has put in his executive order. What we have done is we've visited on Wednesday 75 different retailers in the city, 75 different locations where we thought they're, where we wanted to lay eyes on the social distancing practices. And those 75 different locations had a wide variety of practices. Some had already closed due to lack of traffic. And so I don't know the answer at this moment about some of the specific examples you mentioned, but a lot of the retailers have closed, even though they were not labeled by the governor as non-essential. They have opted to close due to lack of traffic. Where we found operating businesses, our officers interacted with the management of those businesses to understand their practices and to encourage them to go further in their social distancing activities. There is not one uniform response. It depends very, it depends significantly on the nature of the space and what and how many people and what entity they've got. I've interacted this week with a senior manager in the Walmart team who has indicated they're continuously evaluating their practices inside the store to maintain social distance but allow people to get their basic needs. So I don't think I'm able to provide a uniform answer to that question. I think what we're asking the public to do, first and foremost, is to stay home. But secondly, is to be mindful of this throughout in their behavior, to consolidate their trips out, to minimize the number, and for retailers that have the legal authority to remain open by virtue of the governor's order, that they take all reasonable practices to separate folks. We have found a very high degree of cooperation from businesses and retailers and found no resistance to implementing the distance separations and other things. So one additional step we plan to take is we'll be establishing a new email address, socialdistancing@cityofspartemberg.org, for folks to share any points of concern they encounter in the community. For example, if you're out and about and you see a circumstance where you think social distancing practices are not being adhered to to the degree they ought to, that's an easy way to let us know, and we'll see what coaching is necessary to bring about those type of things. And in addition to that email address, there'll be a hotline posted on the city's website that'll allow folks to do that by telephone as well. And folks can use our Hey Spartanburg app to communicate that information to us as well. Many of the clothing retailers have opted to close, as one example. And so the most important thing that we don't want to get lost in this is the expectation is that folks stay home. And as consistent as we can be on that, the better off we'll be. Happy to try to answer any questions.
Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let me respond to Ms. Brown, Councilwoman Brown. Ross, Marshalls, the Steinmarts, TJ Maxx, all of those stores have been closed now for more than a week. And if you want to have an example on how we should be, you know, in stores, Gush is for as the social distances, I would suggest that people go to Costco because it is done the way that it should be done, six feet apart all the way through. And so that's a good example right there to follow, Gush, in stores.
Also, Mr. Mayor, if I may, one question to Bob about the 15-day order, that that's in conjunction with the governor's not starting today with us per se. We're going along with what the governor stated on yesterday, even though I'm talking about a one-day separation.
Well, so Councilman Rice, the 15 days, because this is an emergency ordinance, by reading of the state law and I think our city code as well, and it's being passed by one reading, it has an effective shelf life of 15 days. So from today.
From today.
15 days, this will be the law in the City of Spartanburg ordinance. If you pass it today, we can freely revisit it at the end of that period and renew it if we deem it appropriate.
Okay. Another question, Chris, with what we have in place now that people can report some things that they may deem not following the ordinance. Now, are we sending out public safety to go respond to this? And if we are, if it's someone else, who would that be? But also, what measures will our staff be taking when they are going to interact with this group that may be more than three or four or five or six? And, go ahead, Chris.
Yes, sir. One of the things I want to be clear about is our primary objective is not to engage in formal law enforcement of these provisions. We have yet to find a situation where a little bit of coaching and interaction and some suggestions have not been heeded. Most folks have gotten the word, are very concerned about it, and if they are not staying home, they are taking appropriate steps to safeguard their employees and those they're interacting with. But if it came to it, if we found that there was a lack of response and cooperation, this ordinance makes clear that the police officers of the city are authorized to enforce that action to disperse groups and groups of three or more wherever they may be.
And along with that, Chris, I'm concerned with the gatherings at private properties, at homes that we may see or recognize. Are we having, again, staff responding to people that may have a gathering at their home, a large gathering at their home?
Right. And private property is obviously, it's a different concern. I mean, it's a different relationship that we would have in that situation. But again, our first order of business would be to coach, to communicate about the issues, to make recommendations and to advise. But we do not intend to go inside private property and count the number of individuals. No, sir.
And just for the record, I am in favor of the governor's executive order as well as what we have here, what we have put in place. But I think mainly, it's up to us, each and every one of us, to abide by the social distancing ourselves and, you know, and holding those small crowds. Just one example, and I'll get off of here. My son had to go back to Charleston to clean out his dorm. They're done for the year. He just called a few minutes ago. I mean, literally, that's why I was a little late getting on, getting on, that he was pulled over and the officer asked him, you know, where are you going? And, you know, he let the officer know he was cleaning out his dorm and was grabbing a bite to eat, but he advised him to go on back in. As you continue to say, coaching, Chris, I definitely agree with you. We have to educate the people. We have to educate ourselves as well in order for this to move forward. But I'm definitely in favor of the governor's order and even our ordinance here as it reads.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask two questions here for Chris. Chris, one, when we think about who people are listening to, you know, I know Kathy has really strong relationships with some of the neighborhood leaders and the neighborhood associations across the city. Are we working with them or communicating with them as they are even closer to people in the individual neighborhoods and have, you know, stronger relationships than some of us, Maya? Are we using those avenues?
Yes, ma'am. And I've been real pleased with and appreciative of the work that our communications team and neighborhood services and community relations folks have done to date. This is very much of, it's a personal thing, as you all have all made clear. It's our own acceptance of accountability for our own potential to spread or be part of this that is important. And so we're trying to echo that and we're trying to model that as well in our activities. But yes, there has been communication through all of the city's channels, including information we have with our business networks, neighborhood leadership folks, and then the direct communication with the high volume of the big numbers of social media contacts we have as well.
Great. And my second question is, do we have any means of tracking what kind of impact this might have? Are we still looking at the pedestrian counters downtown to see, you know, how much fewer people are there? Or can we track, you know, a week after this, hopefully this ordinance is passed here in a minute, to see what kind of impact that's having?
We do have access to that data, the pedestrian counter data downtown. And we can tell you anecdotally that foot traffic is dramatically reduced in the heart of downtown. It is, but we will certainly be able to compare the time periods for the pedestrian counters. And there may be other sources of data. In fact, businesses, we have access to different metrics that we'll be able to share over time about the impact on the volume of folks visiting businesses.
Great.
And Chris.
And when we think about downtown. Yeah, sorry, one more.
Yeah.
We have any capacity of closing off Morgan Square? In the times I've driven by it, there's still lots of people, you know, smaller groups, obviously, but still people hanging out there.
We can disperse any congregation that gathers on the square itself. We want to leave the vehicle traffic and pedestrian access to the businesses. Many of them are doing a robust carryout. You know, the restaurants are doing as much as they can in terms of carryout business, since we don't want to make that less convenient by any formal closures, but we can make it clear that there's an expectation that the square itself, along with our other park and potential gathering spaces throughout the city, that we discourage gatherings there.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, Chris, just a real quick on the follow-up about the businesses. I imagine that a number, you know, of the downtown, what are we doing exactly to engage with them? Is it our role or is it the chamber's role with respect to resources that may be available for them, to them for, you know, relief purposes and that sort of thing?
We're working on both fronts. We're working, we've been trying to drive traffic to a couple of educational things that the chamber has conducted. And we have been contacting directly through the, through our business license record data, all of the licensed businesses with information about relief mechanisms that are in the, in the federal legislation that's passed, as well as we're engaged with the chamber on some local relief mechanisms. And that, of course, goes along with your ordinance passed earlier this week that provides a little cash flow relief to some of our businesses as well. So it's a both-and kind of answer because we know that we want to get, we want to meet folks where they are and wherever, whatever tool we have for getting that information to the right folks in the right ways, we're going to employ.
All right, Chris, the Chris, Mayor, okay. I want to strongly encourage the people who are using the trails going to follow the social distances rule, six feet apart and no more than three in groups. Three of our trails have already closed. And unless we follow the rules, all of them are going to close. And so I am strongly urging them, Gush, to please follow those rules because people need an outlet at this time.
Mr. Mayor, this is Jamie. Yeah, I want to touch on a point that was raised earlier about the actual impact of this ordinance. And, you know, while I think it obviously doesn't go any further than the governor's executive order, it does take an important step to affirm that order on behalf of the citizens of Spartanburg, also encourage the, you know, the proper behaviors, but also commits the city to enforcing that order. Because I think, I think what, you know, one of the concerns that I've had all along is, is that as governors or cities, you know, enact ordinances to encourage the proper behavior, unless there's the proper enforcement and coaching to ensure compliance, then it's feckless. And so, you know, it's my hope that if we pass this ordinance, then it, one, shows the city is serious about meeting the challenge of this virus and committing whatever resources we can to ensuring that, you know, our citizens are taking the appropriate action. So in my mind, this ordinance strikes the proper balance. I recognize that, you know, this is not a static situation, and we need to review this in 15 days to ensure, one, whether or not we should continue it, which we most likely will need to, but also make sure it's covering the appropriate bases as we go forward.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
During this time, people downtown, the business license, which is coming up for renewal, are we giving them a relic extension?
Well, we've, we're, business license renewal for most folks was at the end of February, so most of that activity had completed for this calendar year prior to the onset of the South Carolina Emergency Declaration. But we have essentially capped the late payment penalties for any of those that renew off-cycle. So the answer is to some degree, yes, but it depends on the timing of business activity.
About filing, did we give them a break there?
Well, the only ones that hadn't already filed are those that are unsure whether they're renewing their license. And those are the folks that are benefiting from the relief right now. So in addition, of course, the prior action delayed the time in which hospitality tax remittances are due, which allowed those businesses to hang on to cash that they have for an additional period of four to eight weeks to help them manage their constricted cash flow right now.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the ordinance as drafted.
Second that motion.
That a motion was second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any queries?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the only additional agenda item we had for was just an update time, much of which I've already. much of which I've already, uh, covered in the course of our conversation. But if, if there are additional questions or comments, um, about how the city might, uh, be able to be more effective during this time, I'd, I'd certainly, uh, love to hear those and attempt to address those. I'd also want to make sure everyone is clear on what the city is and is not, uh, doing from an operational perspective. Um, we've made further changes this week, uh, to safeguard our employees. Um, uh, so we have some offices that remain open for business, but, uh, require, uh, uh, telephone or email interaction prior to face-to-face interaction. And what that does is enable us to make sure that, uh, folks have the right information at hand, that we can get everything done that needs to be done, uh, online as opposed to, um, in person. Um, and we've found that that has, uh, that has been effective in minimizing the amount of, um, uh, exposure our staff might have. Um, and at the same time, make sure that folks have been able to get what they need from the city to keep essential, essential business occurring. Um, I've been pleased with the ingenuity that's been shown by, uh, city offices and finding ways to, to do that, um, and keep business flowing. Uh, your, uh, uh, for example, your, um, uh, your building code inspectors are being, uh, sort of remotely dispatched, but they are still, um, conducting inspections so construction projects can continue. Your planning department is still processing, um, uh, various applications. Your design review board, uh, will meet Tuesday virtually to advance, uh, uh, hopefully, uh, a couple of projects to the next step. Um, and the business license, uh, team and finance department are continuing, continuing to transact business. Uh, but we've found great success in moving much of that, uh, to online and, uh, telephone-based interaction. As Councilwoman Little John, uh, referenced, one of the operational judgments that is, that we are carefully reviewing and considering is whether or not it's appropriate to allow the rail trail to continue to be open. Um, we have got additional signage, um, out there and we have a team of folks that are keeping eyes on it. As long as folks, um, adhere to, um, the, the separation, we all recognize the importance of getting some physical activity during this time and getting a little fresh air and a little sunshine and that type of thing. So we're trying hard to, to, to keep that an option because it is a safe, uh, uh, environment for, for that type of activity. Um, but we will, if we see as the, as the weather improves today and tomorrow, if we see, uh, a higher volume than, than the space can accommodate safely per the guidelines, unfortunately, we will, um, have to, have to close that. So that's one thing that is on the front burner of examination. We are working with the, um, Spartanburg County Emergency Management Team, um, providing support to some things they may need. As you know, we have, um, our, our, our community centers, our rec centers are currently closed. Uh, we may repurpose on a temporary basis. Um, uh, some of that, uh, 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 some of those assets to support, um, emergency response activities as needed. Uh, we've been very appreciative of the, of the cooperation shown by the, the county team and by United Way and other social service providers to continue to meet the needs of, of those in, uh, with, uh, uh, specific challenges in this time in our community. So, uh, everyone's been pulling together and in the right direction and we expect that to continue. But if you have any questions about what we're doing operationally, otherwise, I'm, I'm happy to try to address it.
There would be,
Chris?
The last thing I think we should close down the rail trail with the police. But people need somewhere they go to exercise and walk. So we don't need to close a rail trail down or any walking trails. Just make sure we have plenty of people out there, letting the people know what's going on. But we need to keep those things open. I imagine the boyfriend is going to grow up a lot during this time. I've spent two weeks with my wife in the last 30 years, so, you know, gathering isn't going to create a lot of problems.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes?
I want to follow up on something that was said by, um, Councilperson Rice. For the people who are on personal properties, you are putting yourself and your family at risk of when you do not follow social distances, um, rules. Because on this past weekend, I witnessed three parties at one residence and I know that there were more than 15 people there. So, and I'm hoping that maybe the police, you know, I know you cannot stop them from doing something, but maybe you can just, um, have somebody to drive by, I should encourage them not to do that.
So what if you tell them that there's too many people there, Ruth?
No, I'm not getting involved with that. That's not,
You're more sensitive to get involved, but the neighbors you want to get involved with. You know, I think people, they have the right to do on their own property.
When I'm not invited to the party, Mayor, I'm not going to tell other people what to do at that party, especially on that personal property.
But, 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 but I will say to, to, to Ruth's effort here, uh, to, to any gathering and, and as, uh, the, the weather turns, you know, uh, nice, I mean, it's springtime. Folks are used to being outside and, and having gatherings at their homes and, and in other places. But we, we have to continue to educate our citizens and as Chris, uh, uh, continues to say, coach our, our, our citizens on, on what's the best way to have some of these, uh, 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 gatherings. And, and as city, as city staff and, 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 and city employees, we, we have to set the example as well. Uh, if, if, if we're out, uh, in gatherings of more than, um, three or four or five people, I mean, how can we sit here and pass an ordinance? And, and, and again, we, we, we're not doing what we, the ordinance say. So as, I mean, again, we have to educate the people and make sure we're, we're doing the things that have, have been asked, uh, for us to do.
And, and I think it's important to underscore, I mean, the, the freedoms we enjoy in our society come with responsibilities as well, right? And, and, and so we want to, we, we need to ensure that we're encouraging the proper behavior. And, and I think the last thing any of us want to do is close the trails. Um, but, but if, if our staff encounters gross abuse, uh, and, and, you know, and, uh, and, and, you know, a lot of violations, um, you know, at some point, we may be forced to make that choice. And I don't think any of us wants to, to have to make that choice. So I think, I think, you know, you know, encouraging the proper behavior, getting the cooperation from our, from our citizens, uh, enacting responsibly will, will ensure that, that, that we can get through this with, with minimal impact.
And I would just, just to kind of follow up on that note, I think the reason why we are essentially here um, is because folks are not practicing, uh, common sense. Um, you know, while I did vote in favor of this ordinance, you know, we're, we're basically just reaffirming what the governor passed down in his own ordinance. Um, to me, we're just putting paper over the cracks. Um, you know, we, we, we know now that there has been more testing through the, through the, the drive-in, uh, service that Spartanburg Regional, um, to date, since they've opened, there have been about 235 tests that have been, uh, done through those drive-throughs, but we're still waiting on results, um, and having discussions with them. They're still, um, you know, it's a seven to 10 business day turnaround. There's such a huge backlog for the test results that are coming in. Um, and they are anticipating that those, a number of those tests are going to come back positive. Um, what that also does, uh, to our system is that, you know, they're following the guidelines that are being set forth by the CDC, um, and as healthcare providers. But what that also makes our, our, our health system do is that they're burning through their PPEs, waiting on results from, from all of these tests that are being distributed. Um, so, you know, for me, of course, I'm not going to go against anything that, um, is not promoting self-distancing or social distancing. Um, I don't really think what we just passed is anything but fluff. Um, but I'm certainly not going to be against that. I do think that we still are not doing enough. Um, you know, the economists are arguing that very strict public health measures are the best way to bring back the quickest economic recovery. And the sooner we all get on board with that and, and pass stricter measures, I think the better off our city's going to be as a whole, as a whole. And I'll, and I'll close by saying to the residents of Spartanburg, um, I know that, you know, this is a time where people are very vulnerable. Um, there's a lot of scamming going on at this point, uh, particularly now that the, the stimulus bill has been passed. Um, so be very vigilant in terms of, uh, you know, folks that are, you know, you may get a call or an email scam or something like that where people are trying to verify your financial information, um, so that you can get your, your, uh, economic, you know, your, your stimulus checked or your refund faster. So be very vigilant about that. Um, taxpayers are really encouraged not to engage in potential scammers online or on the phone. So if you have questions about that, and Chris, I hope, uh, maybe we could put out some information as well on, on our website and whatnot, um, to, to, to educate folks on the potential for scammers, um, as we move forward.
Okay, Mayor, did we miss, have we reached, you know, the city comments? Are we still up here with Chris on the item three?
What, what do you ask? What did you ask?
Have we come down to four yet? Cause you're, you're still on three.
We're still on three.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we had not gotten past, got a city comments yet.
Well, I made my comments, so I won't, I won't repeat again.
I'd like to ask Chris one, following one other question while we're in this part. Um, Chris, we know that this is a virus that does not respect county or city or country lines. Um, and so, you know, I grieve that we have to have this piecemeal approach in our state. Um, so this is obviously outside the purview of what we have any control over, but can you tell us anything about what the county is doing? Um, because all it takes is, you know, one person to drive over into the county, um, all of that to say, yeah, just if you could give us any kind of info on what, I know county council met last night in person. Um, so I'm thankful that we have set this up to, to meet virtually, but if you could give us any kind of info, that'd be helpful.
Uh, I don't, uh, to be honest, I don't know if, uh, the, the county is considering any, uh, regulatory actions that are distinct from what the state has done. As a, as a practical matter, you know, setting aside for a moment the very important activity of education and awareness and messaging and encouragement and all of those things, which we all need to do as much of as we can. There are really only a few baskets of activity that any level of government could potentially regulate that relate to the spread of virus. The, the first is, uh, as the governor has stepped in, is determining which establishments can be open for business and which must be closed. The governor's made that call and, and has laid that out. The second basket of activity is movement about the community. Now, we have, we have made clear, and it is clear even in, in the jurisdictions that have taken the most significant action across the country, that folks are allowed to move about their communities to meet their, uh, essential needs or to, uh, or to, you know, to get access to food and medicine and to, and perform essential services. So we will see some degree of movement about our community, no matter how compliant our population is with what's being asked. And then the course, the third basket of activity is how individuals behave as they go about those things. And what we're, what we are placing emphasis on with this activity is that we're going to deploy our resources towards that third basket of activities. And that is avoiding the groups larger than three to the extent we possibly can. Um, I don't know of a stronger action we could take in that third basket legally, uh, other than making it clear that our team will act to change behavior, uh, to the extent we can when we see, uh, when we see groups not practicing social distancing. Um, so in that respect, we'd have to think very carefully about what additional local regulation is even feasible or possible, um, given the legal framework we're operating in. Uh, uh, we don't envision a time, uh, when, uh, there are, given the volume of people that are involved in providing essential services and the recognized need of folks to go out and get their groceries and, and other things. Uh, uh, we don't envision any practical solution that involves wholesale traffic stops or anything of that nature. Um, so we really are, uh, uh, back to that, uh, those, those two activities that, that we think make the most sense for us to pursue. One is engaging when we see, uh, folks failing to practice social distancing. And we've authorized that by the, by the ordinance today. And secondly, the messaging, communication reemphasis, uh, uh, as thoroughly and as forcefully as we possibly can, and we plan to keep doing that.